We'll call our Thursday, August 5th, Cookeville City Council meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Womack.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wheaton.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
I present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish so, stand for the indication given by Skip Ritter, Senior Chaplain of the American Legion, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Play.
Let's all bow our heads in reverence to our Lord. Heavenly Father, Creator of the heavens and the earth and all the things that are in it, we thank you so much for this day that you've given us. We thank you for these councilmen, and we ask your blessing and direction on the meeting tonight. May they honor and glorify this great and wonderful city that we live in. We thank you for what you're going to do, and we trust in you that you will complete the work that you started. We pray all this in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please stick the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Skip. I'm going to consider approval of agendas presented. Are there any changes?
Approve.
Got a motion second? Motion second, any discussion? All vote?
I V S motion carries.
Thank you. For A, consider appointment to the Architectural Design Review Board. John Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The Architectural Design Review Board consists of five members, including two representatives from the Planning Commission and three citizens at large. The zoning code stipulates one of which should be a registered architect or landscape architect, and the others should be owners of a business registered in Cookeville, and all should be residents of the city. The term of membership is three years, except for the representatives of the Planning Commission, whose terms run concurrent with their membership on the Planning Commission. Membership terms have lapsed on this board, and these need to be reappointed by council. From the Planning Commission, Mr. Jim Woodford and Mr. Jim Kav have agreed to serve. Architect, Mr. Peter Metz, who's previously served on the board, has also been contacted, and he agrees to serve on the board. Ms. Jennifer Williams and Mr. Donnie Suits have also been nominated and contacted, and both have agreed to serve if appointed. Plan Department recommends for these appointments, and I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the appointments?
No.
Motion second. Any comments or questions? All vote?
All votes correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. For B, presentation of Officer of the Year for 2020, Chief Evans.
Mayor, council, as you learned in work session, we have an opportunity that's an award in our policy, and I guess we've been a little remiss in not awarding this award sooner. So this is, as far as I know, the first time the Cookeville Police Department has ever given Officer of the Year. And this will be Officer of the Year for the year 2020. I'm just going to read just one line out of our policy. It says, "The Officer of the Year Award is awarded by the chief to an officer who has intelligently and consistently demonstrated superior performance, initiative, leadership, dedication, professionalism, and motivation throughout the year." I'd also like to just take a minute to read an excerpt from the narrative. So basically, what we do is we have supervisors submit nominations to the awards board. The award boards obviously review those narratives and nominations, and then subsequently vote, and then submit a name to the chief of police for approval. So just a couple of paragraphs, you bear with me. "After careful consideration, I hereby recommend and nominate Officer Ben Dukes for Officer of the Year. In our opinion, Officer Dukes is the epitome of what a Cookeville police officer should look like, act, and perform alike. During his tenure here, Officer Dukes has always been a top producer of self-initiated cases while still fielding calls for service. His demeanor and the way he talks to the public bring great pride and professionalism to our department. Suspect or upstanding citizen, everyone is treated with respect by Officer Dukes. He is always quick to assist any other officer at any time, and displays an abundance of knowledge about laws and criminal procedure. Officer Dukes is a top report writer in the department. His reports are always error-free, contain all necessary information, are chronologically correct, and are easy to read and understood. Officer Dukes also dedicates a lot of time to extra-duty functions within the department. He is currently a department instructor in multiple areas and actively seeks out further training for himself. Dukes is the current executive officer for the CPD SWAT team, and has gained tremendous respect from his peers due to his knowledge and work ethic in that area. The trust and responsibility to maintain all equipment, weaponry, and ammunition and make critical decisions are unprecedented for such a young officer. Lastly, Dukes is without argument one of the best FTOs, and that's a field training officer, we have ever had. His patience, knowledge, resourcefulness makes him stand out above the rest when training a new officer. He always ensures his trainees are more than ready and capable of being released on their own when he's done with their training. This documentation of the trainer's performance is the best in the department. He puts tremendous effort into going above and beyond the norm to document the trainees' daily activity." So again, that's just part of an extensive narrative that kind of tells you what kind of police officer Ben Dukes is. And now, as of Sunday, it is Sergeant Ben Dukes. So without further ado, Ben?
Congratulations, Sergeant Dukes. Saw a picture on social media, and you look an awful lot like your dad at that same age. Thought that was awesome. So congratulations. We're proud to have you representing our department and the city of Cookeville, and I hope you have many, many years of success here.
Thanks, sir. I just want to thank its family as well. I'm a former state trooper, and whenever I would go out, my family didn't know when I was coming home, the mental state that I was in, going to be in when I got home. And for you to be there to support him, so we can endeavor and be a really good officer for us, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Under O Business, 5A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on July 15th. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion second, any discussion? All vote?
All votes correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. Under the consent agenda, 6A, 789521 for a public hearing on ordinance 0210816 to close abandoned and declared surplus property of Portion Joff Drive. 6B, 789521 for a public hearing on ordinance 0210817, amendment to the zoning code to re-adopt and revise in Section 208A, architectural design standards. Section 208A 4B, material standards. Proposed ordinance requires certain materials to be restricted in construction buildings. 6C, 789521 for a public hearing on ordinance 0210818, amendments to the zoning code to revise Section 208A, architectural design standards. Section 208A 4B, material standards by deleting prohibited materials. And 6D, consider awarding bids for LED shoebox lights, transformers, and 100 U R D primary cable for the electric department. Is there a motion on the four items on the consent agenda?
No.
Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council? All vote?
I V S motion carries.
Thank you. Business, 7A, consider resolution R210822, offering support for the proposed extension of the Tennessee Central Heritage Rail Trail. Councilman Womack.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been asked by the Tennessee Central Heritage Rail Trail Authority to bring this resolution to the city council. It's being offered to all of the municipality and the county division in Southern County. About a month ago, the rail trail authority decided that they wanted to expand to the east and west. Rail Trail started in 2006 with the intergovernmental authority, and it took from 2006 to 2015 to get the first 4.3 miles done. And so this resolution asks the municipality to offer support for getting federal funding to expand the rail trails to the east and to the west. In our budget, there's $75,000 for planning for expansion of the rail trails west end part. And so this is just additional, that's saying of support for this. And it'll take a number of years. And if it took six years, from 2006 to 2015, get the first 4.3 miles, you can imagine that it'll take a while to get the next two miles. So I'm offering this as a resolution.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the resolution?
No.
Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council? All vote?
All votes correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7A, consider resolution, consider approval of engineering agreement with Clinton Engineering for design services for the widening of West Stevens Street from South Willow to Hedges Street. Oh, Hughes Street, I'm sorry. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, councilmembers, I'm submitting for your approval of a professional services agreement with Clinton Engineering. You mentioned, Mayor, to do the desired improvements to West Stevens Street from South Willow to its intersection with Hughes Street. The proposed improvements include widening the street to two 11-foot lanes with curb gutter and sidewalk on both sides of the street, and a center turn lane on Stevens Street where it intersects with South Willow Avenue. The services also include design for storm drainage, erosion, set of control plants, new water, sewer lines, and surveys taken out of the roadway taking. The anticipated time of completion is nine months, and the cost for the provision of the services is $191,000. This is a budgeted item, and I would request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion second. Any questions from the council? All vote?
All votes correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7C, consider declaring a surplus and authorize the disposal of storage unit structures located 29 North Cedar. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, councilmembers, in August of 29, the council approved the purchase of the property located at 29 North Cedar Avenue for the purpose of providing additional parking for the downtown area. Located on the property are 46 self-storage units. Over the last two years, we've continued to lease the units, which has resulted in $36,000 of rent notice, which helps offset the costs from purchasing the property. We delayed the actual construction of the parking lot to so it would coincide with completion of the improvements, the streetscape improvements we're doing on Cedar Avenue. After the announcement that the city intended to start construction of the parking lot, we did receive some inquiries from the public on any interested parts of the actual structures, including the garage doors and some of the interior portions. In order for us to sell some of these elements, the council will have to approve us declaring a surplus and making it available for purchase through competitive bid process. Of course, just as we leased these, any additional revenue we could get from selling any of the materials that are part of the buildings which we intend to just demolish would, of course, go to help offset the cost of the property, but also actually construct in the parking lot. So I would request your approval to declare the structures a surplus and allow us to dispose of them by the competitive bidding process.
Is there a motion?
No.
Motion second. Any questions from the council? All vote?
All votes correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7D, consider approval of one-year contract extension with Retail Strategies for retail development, marketing, and consulting services. Melinda Kiefer.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with a quick update and to request your approval for a one-year extension with our retail marketing and professional service provider, Retail Strategies. I've put together some slides real quick. They're also in your book. I'm just going to run through them very quickly, just to give you an update and to show you the types of data they prepare for us to help us recruit. As you can see, retail begets retail. So every time we check a box off this list, we get one step closer for us having all of our dream retailers as we go forward. We started out little, and we're going, here's how we see us. This is our city limit, right? Population 34,000. This is how retailers see us, which is a huge target market area. A lot of those are determined by mobile data tracking. We've talked about that before. And they look at us in a three, five, and 10-minute drive, and a three, five, and 10-mile drive. So that's just an example. The mobile data here, they bring to us every year just to give us a look at where the cell phones that are in a specific area. This one was at Walmart in June, I believe, from June to July. Where it found home? Where did that phone live? And it just helps us understand where our customers come from. This one was really good. I wanted to point out a couple of things. Look at the current year population. In a three-mile radius of the center of the city, we're about 30,000. You drive out 10 miles, our population turns into 80. Also want you to go down to the daytime population. In a three-mile radius with an estimated population of 30,000, during the day, we bump up to almost 53,000. And if you do a 10-mile radius out, we're up to almost 86,000 during the day. And so to that end, you know that that lands on all of our services. Every one of these directors sitting out there are bearing the brunt of that daytime population in some form or fashion. Also, look at our labor force. In that three-mile radius, about 24,000. You go out 10 miles, and it's 65,000. We truly are a regional market. So here's our customized trade area. They estimate it's about 115,000 people. You might be shocked. Average age for male is 39, female 42. So we're a young population. We are approximately 52,000, 51,000 households, and our median income is up to 41.5. When I started this job 11 years ago, it was just a little bit lower than that. So we all need to feel really good about the work we've done together. I will tell you all the boxes that we love and want. You're about a 45,000 to 50,000 minimum household income to get the look, just at Y. Look at our housing units. Average housing, and this is data that they pull, okay? Everybody has their own numbers. Retailers have their numbers, but this is what they look at. And believe it or not, occupied housing units, owner occupied, renter occupied, you can see the whole graph there based on their data. All right, here's the cool part, total market supply. They say there's about $1.7 billion with the goods and services in our trade area for sale. Go to the next one. They also say there's over $1.8 billion of demand. So the next slide shows you our gap. There's over $70 million that is leaving the market to be purchased elsewhere. So always our goal with retail recruitment is to narrow that gap as we go forward. I want to remind everybody, the retail timeline is a very long one. Starts with the investors. National brands are publicly held. It goes to Wall Street, then to our real estate director, on to capital committee, real estate committee, letter of intent, and then you finally get to where it opens. So it's a waiting game, and you have to be patient. Real quick, I want to show the best part of this. They've worked with property owners in this area. This is where it's really cool. Over 50 sites, they've talked to 40 brokers, tenants, and property owners. You go to the next page, they've worked with Jackson Plaza on Backfield. Couple comments on Tymark, they've helped the property owner market that. And then Willa Tree Plaza on marking Backfield as well. Willow Bend Shopping Center, and then also, this would be the Norwalk site, as we call it, up to the top, they're helping those property owners, tenants, and then currently they're also helping market the Fairground site as we go forward. These are things that we don't really have the budget or the staff to do, and our annual contract with them is $25,000 a year. They're also looking at redevelopment. Superbachi Grill is an area that wants to be redeveloped, obviously the Cookeville Mall. And then they'll do flyers for these property owners, and no cost to them. So not only is this service to all the citizens, it's a big service to our actual development and owner community. They like to say that we are the local expert, but they're the retail real estate expert. I feel like it's a good bang for our buck. I'd like to request your approval for a one-year extension.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion second. Any questions?
I would ask, do they offer a, I mean, can we do a longer term for, I mean, if we did three years for less than 25 a year? I mean, it's obvious, this has been a fantastic partnership.
It really has. This is your statement.
Something we want to continue. So, yeah, so, I mean, would they do that?
They probably would. Mayor, we'll look into that and say, I will tell you our relationship with them, and they know this market so well. I don't think that our fee structure on our contract has kept up with maybe when they're signing up new communities. So I feel very blessed that we still have the friends and family discount. And so, yeah, it would probably be better for them. They would love to have a longer-term commitment. And maybe up our game a little bit, we've talked about a website, et cetera.
Maybe just have a, well, I'm for opposite approving this, but maybe have a conversation, and we could maybe amend that or come back on that if the council.
Let me get some proposals for you. Let's get this one year set, and then let's see what we can do from there. Is that agreeable?
We have a motion second, right? So, yeah, any other comments or questions? Let's vote.
All votes correct. I V S motion carries.
7E, consider approval of proposal for preliminary geotechnical exploration service at 1699 Albert Mackey Road. Melinda Kiefer.
Mayor and council, you know so much of our job creation and our economic development recruitment, whether it's retail or industrial, is being prepared. We need to be prepared for that prospect that comes. So what I've brought to you is a request for professional services for geotechnical, geophysical, and geotechnical services at Albert Mackey Road, known as the Mackey Farm. This will help us better determine and understand the ground for highest and best use. Greg Brown has assisted me. We've worked with the company. We've taken a long, hard look at that land. We've submitted it several times. We've had several site visits. The family has been great partners. They have paid for a Phase 1 environmental, so that's a step that goes into it. We're going to try to do some ERT testing, which is really cool. It's almost like you're taking ultrasound of the ground, and you can see when it hits water or hits rock or whatever, then it bounces back up, as well as six borings. Our request today is for $23,800 and also approval, if needed, for up to four more borings at $1,300 a hole for a total of $29,000. We will do the ERT testing first, and that will determine where we do the six holes, if we need 10 holes. Again, Mr. Brown is helping us with this, so I feel like we're in good hands, and I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion second. Any questions from the council?
No, but I will say, we're still negotiating some of the fine two provisions of the agreement, but the price is to stay the same, and the overall scope will stay the same. So if the council will approve it, subject codes, final negotiations, not rise, Mr. Mills decided once we've done that, then.
Trust you'll get us the best contract possible, sir.
I'm telling you, there's been red ink flying all over the place. We're going to get it. We're going to get it right. We're close, aren't we, Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
All right. All vote?
I V S motion carries.
7F, consider approval to purchase sanitation dumpsters utilizing Sourcewell Purchasing Contract for Public Works, Greg Brown.
Mayor, council, we would like to purchase 27 eight-yard dumpsters from Sourcewell Purchasing Contract. The price for each dumpster is $1,410. The total for all 27 is $38,070. This is a budgeted item, and I would like to view approval for the purchase.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion second. Any questions from council? All vote?
All votes correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 7G, consider approval to purchase one single-axle dump truck utilizing Sourcewell Purchasing Contract number 060920. Rick Woods, Leisure Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a request to purchase one single-axle dump truck for our maintenance division of our department that's purchasing it through the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative for a total of $110,971. It is a budgeted item, and I would request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion second. Any questions from the council? All vote?
All votes correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 7H, consider approval postage meter lease agreement utilizing statewide contract 419, ID 57415. And Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council, the lease agreement on the postage meter here at City Hall is coming to an end, and we've had a five-year lease. We would like to do another five-year lease with Pitney Bowes. The five-year cost would be $11,557.80, and we request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion second. Any questions from council? All vote?
I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7I, consider approval of lease agreement with Flock Safety for five stationary license plate readers. Chief Evans.
Mayor and council, as you stated, this is a lease agreement with Flock Safety. They are the manufacturer of a fixed license plate reader. These license plate readers will actually be fixed upon poles throughout the city, and we'll make that determination based upon what the data tells us. The lease agreement covers for a one-year period, and it is a complete unit, so there's no other cost associated with that. So it has its own SIM card and LTE capability that transmits the data, and it's also powered by solar panels. Flock Safety is the sole source provider, and I think I provided you a sole source information letter with that. Total cost for the year is $13,125, and that includes delivery and setup. It is a budgeted item. I will add that you may recall, a few months ago, we had a kidnapping, and it resulted in the apprehension of a suspect in a jurisdiction in East Tennessee. We were able to locate that suspect because of Flock Safety. LPR cameras in that jurisdiction. So they're used pretty extensively across the state by several jurisdictions, and have seen great success in crime prevention and apprehension of suspects. I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion second. Comments or questions? Let the record show that, as you said, they will not be used to issue tickets to citizens only for apprehension.
Absolutely. They actually operate through our NCIC. You can put a custom hot list in there. So basically, all it does is read a tag. It does not visually look at anyone, and so there's no photos of individuals. So it looks at the tag, and if the tag is in the NCIC or on a custom hot list as a suspect in a crime or stolen vehicle, then that's what the alert comes to.
All vote?
All votes correct. IBS motion carries.
Seven J. Consider rejecting previously approved bid seven-one-twenty-one for vest carrier system and award bid to low bidder meeting specs. Chief Evans.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we previously, I don't recall the date here. I think it's in the item there in January, I mean, July the first, I think, yes. We submitted some bids for approval, and at that time, we had gotten approval for calls on this particular clothing item. This is a vest carrier system. It's actually a uniform that has a vest carrier system built into it. We were subsequently notified by the manufacturer representative that that particular vendor did not have the authority to bid that item. They didn't, it was not available to them. So we subsequently had to regroup, and so I'm asking you to reject that bid that you approved on July the first of this year and approve the lowest bidder meeting specification, which is CMS. And this is an aggregate bid, so that would include all items in that line.
So is there a motion to reject and then approve in the same deal?
Some moved. I think it's a new rescind.
Motion to rescind and approve.
We already approved one bid, so I have to rescind that and approve the new.
Just reading what's on my deal right here, so glad to change that, rescind. Is there a motion to rescind and approve?
Motion to rescind and approve.
Thank you. Motion second. Any questions from the council? All vote?
All votes correct. IBS motion carries.
Thank you. Seven K. Consider awarding bid for one pickup truck utilizing statewide contract two oh nine, ID six-four-four-seven-three for the Fire Department, interim chief, Mittanyon.
Mayor and Council, we are seeking the approval for a, it's a two thousand twenty-two F-two-fifty. It'll be a medical response truck for us. It's a utilizing state bid. It's a budgeted item for thirty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. I would request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion second. Any questions from the council?
I'm just glad that the first one we did was so successful that we're able to, yeah, do this again, so.
Yes, ma'am.
All vote?
All votes correct. IBS motion carries.
Seven L. Consider approval to purchase bid for twenty-five self-contained breathing apparatus bottles utilizing the HGAC Bi-Cooperative Purchasing Program. Chief Young.
Mayor and Council, this is replacing twenty-five SCBA bottles that have reached their service life through the HGAC Bi-Coop. It's a budgeted item for twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and fifty cents, and I would request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion second. Any questions? All vote?
All votes correct. IBS motion carries.
Seven M. Consider approval to purchase seven sets of turnout gear utilizing the NDT.gov Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. Chief Young.
Mayor and Council, this is for seven new sets of turnout gear for recently hired personnel. Sixteen thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars is the price on it, and I would ask you for your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion second. Any questions from the council? All vote?
All votes correct. IBS motion carries.
Thank you. And seven E. Consider declaring a surplus, a nineteen-seventy-two American La France Hundred-Foot Ladder Truck. Chief Young.
Mayor and Council, we are seeking to declare the nineteen-seventy-two American La France Hundred-Foot Ladder Truck a surplus, and I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion second. Any questions from the council? All vote?
All votes correct.
I'd love to, I haven't discussed it. I'm both abstained. So I just, I would have interest in it, so I wouldn't want to be one of the ones declaring a surplus on it.
You hit the wrong button or something. Okay, very good.
All right, all votes correct. IVS motion carries.
Thank you.
Seven O. Consider approval to purchase two handheld remote gas leak detectors. Jeff Mills.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We'll request an approval to purchase two handheld remote gas leak detectors. These units provide fast and accurate readings at distances up to a hundred feet utilizing laser technology. They're designed for hard-to-reach areas and give us ability to assess leak areas quickly. They eliminate the need for us to access the pipe directly. They are also designed to test conditions through windows and structures that we may not have the immediate opportunity to gain entry. The units are manufactured by sensitive technologies and are compatible with other leak detection equipment we have at use for years. Equipment Controls is a sole provider of this equipment with a letter of sole source documentation provided, and cost for the two-unit purchase totals twenty thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. This is a budgeted purchase, and I would request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion second. Any questions from the council? All vote?
All votes correct. IBS motion carries.
Thank you. Seven P. Consider awarding bid for steel poles for South Jefferson Widening Project, Carl Haney Electric Department.
Mayor and council members, this bid is for sixty-eight steel poles for the South Jefferson Avenue Widening Project. Because of lead times with steel and other equipment right now, the TDOT has requested us to order these poles so that relocation can be done on a timely manner. The low bid for this is two hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. This is a hundred percent reimbursable from TDOT, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion second. Any questions from the council? All vote?
All votes correct. IBS motion carries.
Seven Q. Consider awarding bid for one forklift utilizing Sourcewell Contract oh-nine-one-five-two-zero, Carl Haney.
Mayor and council members, we're requesting to purchase this forklift through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract for nine, thirty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. It will replace an aging unit that's in service now. It is a budgeted item, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion second. Any questions from the council?
All votes correct. IBS motion carries.
Seven R. Consider approval of change order number one on the twenty-twenty wastewater treatment plant solids handling improvement project for Water Quality Control Department, Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and Council, we've been working down at the wastewater plant for the last few years. We've replaced a UV system back in sixteen. That was a two-and-a-half-million-dollar project. We did the headworks in two nineteen, and that was about a million dollars. We're in the solids handling, replacing all of that equipment. The council awarded a contract to WNO back in twenty, or April of twenty. And so we're here tonight seeking council authorization for the city manager to sign change order number one on that project. And this is what we were doing then. We're changing all the equipment out. So the change order is it's seventy thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars. And the new contract amount will be six million five hundred and sixty-three eight ninety-five point four-five. It's going to add ninety-seven calendar days to the project. So the final completion date now will be December second, twenty twenty-one. I've got a list there of the added items that we've added, and some deducts we've taken, and that adds up to the seventy thousand dollars. There's a couple of bigger items in there that need to get done. There is a big item on the added days. There was a Spirex, which is a piece of the equipment that WNO notified us early on in the project. They were having, the companies having problems with the COVID. We've checked all that out, and I think that's a verifiable reason to add some days. So we're here asking for your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion second. Any questions from the council? All vote?
All votes correct. IBS motion carries.
Seven S. Consider approval of engineering contract amendment number two for the twenty-twenty treatment plant solids handling project, Ronnie Kelly.
Okay, so this this applies to the same project. We had an engineering contract with CTI. They're the design engineer. We've added ninety-some days to the contract. Our contract with the engineering company was for a twelve-month contract. We're needing council authorization for the city manager to sign an agreement, amendment number two with the firm. Total cost, I've got it broken down, the different costs. There were some deducts where we didn't do all the pilot testing and so forth, but the total increase will be eighty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. That would request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion second. Any questions from the council? All vote?
All votes correct. IBS motion carries.
T. Consider authorize city manager execute final balance change order number one, water plant miscellaneous improvement project, Ronnie Kelly.
Okay, better news on this one. So we've been, the water plant, the council of water construction contract with WNO back in July of eighteen, it was refurbishing a lot of the existing equipment. We had to take the plant halfway out of service, and it ran on and on and on and on. But we got that finally completed. We stopped the contractor multiple times just for being able to get water to Cookville, and we strung that out. But we are finished with that, and we have a final balance and change order. We're requesting the council authorize city manager to sign that. It is a deduct of a hundred and forty-five thousand fifty-six dollars and forty-five cents, and request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion second. Any questions from the council? All vote?
All votes correct. IBS motion carries.
Thank you. Seven U. Consider approval of engineering contract amendment number one, water plant miscellaneous, Ronnie Kelly.
Okay, this is on the same water plant project that went on and on. It's with SSR. They were the design engineers. The project, we're requesting authorization for the city manager to sign this engineering amendment number one. It'll add twenty-five thousand dollars for the construction phase services because that was extended such a long period of time, we think is justified. Be happy to ask you to answer any questions, but recommend your approval.
Is there a motion?
I move.
Second. Any questions from the council? All vote?
All votes correct. IBS motion carries.
Thank you. And seven V. Consider awarding bid for chlorine. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and Council, we have big, our chemicals out in usually June, and we ask for authorization code at second bidder if we have problems with the first bidder. We only, one of our problems, we only had one bidder for chlorine, so we asked for, and we asked the supplier what the problem was. The issue is volatility in the market. Some of them didn't want us to give us a year's contract, so we went back and asked for a shorter-term contract, and we're asking the council to authorize us to buy from the Daco Company in the amount of six ninety per ton.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion second. Any questions from the council? All vote?
All votes correct. IBS motion carries.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our very long agenda. We have time at the end for citizens that would like to address the council on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone? Council members, do you have anything? All right. We're joined.